Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, my computer was on silent. Good evening. Have two minutes before our council meeting starts. I asked everyone to put their phones on silent or either vibrate.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody.
It's now 7:00 PM. I want to welcome again, everyone, guests, residents, business owners, to the regular meeting. Today is November 16th, 2021. We always start our meetings with the invocation, and we have continued to do it the same in having our mayor, Pro Tim, Sarah Lucido, leader. She does an awesome job, followed by our pleasure of allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear God, as the Thanksgiving holiday nears, let us all take a moment and reflect on all that we are thankful for. We are grateful to live in a country that is based on a democracy that is truly of the people, by the people, and for the people. We are grateful to live in the city of East Point where we continue to display what we can achieve when we work towards the same common goal. We are grateful to be surrounded by family, friends, and a community that is willing to extend a helping hand whenever reaching out for support. And most of all, we are grateful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and thank you, everyone that participated in the pleasure of allegiance, also in that prayer. Good evening to our Assistant City Manager at this time, Ms. Walton. Can you do the roll call, please?
Good evening, Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Present, East Point.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
And Mayor Owens.
Here at East Point. Thank you so much. The approval of the agenda is next. Do anyone want to add or subtract at this time?
Sure, Mayor. Yeah, a motion. We approve the agenda with one modification, that new business A, be removed from the agenda, as it's not necessary to be approved by City Council.
I would approve that.
Any motion and support with that change? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you. Next is the hearing of the public. I think this is one of my favorite times of the council meeting, because I get to hear the ideas of the residents. And so we welcome guests, residents, business owners at this time to the hearing of the public. You get three minutes in the beginning, and you get three minutes at the end. We invite you to tell us your ideas, issues, opinions, and things that can better help us serve you. The hearing of the public is now open. Please state your name, residency, business, and et cetera at this time.
Yes, this here is Bennett Satolo. I'm following up on the last meeting we had in regards to the get reimbursed for the grass. And then, I believe, Councilman Curly said he would get back with me in regards to the street issue and plumbing.
Are you done, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Ms. Mary Harveyford would like to speak next.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of items I wanted to bring to your attention if you're not already aware of them. One is I would really love to see a reconsideration of extending Elky Doom's contract, especially in the midst of this particular turmoil in time with the building department closing. We need to project some stability with City Hall, and I think her staying for at least another six months would provide us with that level of professionalism and stability. The other thing I wanted to mention was regarding the vacancies on boards and commissions, and caution people to understand that those vacancies wouldn't exist if we took more time to think about how we were replacing people, especially when we have experienced people, people who are committed to the community. The last thing I wanted to say is that with Christine Timmons, she was very sincere about her beliefs, and to call her an entertainer, I think, was just misplaced and misappropriate, but she was certainly entertaining. She was very flamboyant. And though I didn't agree with much of what she said, I certainly respected her and her right to say it. So, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to.
Anyone else have any constructive
Yes.
ideas at this time?
Yes, I want to.
So, you already spoke. Sir, you can speak again. Act closer to the end. You can't keep interrupting us, okay? You do that every meeting. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, I've gone through. I don't see any additional hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you. The hearing of the public, the first hearing of the public is now closed. If you would like to speak a second time, you can do that closer to the end. Thank you all that spoke constructively. Moving right along to approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the regular minutes from the November 8th, 2021 meeting.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Here, yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the minutes of the organizational meeting from November 8th, 2021.
Support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings at this time, no unfinished business. We're going to go right into reports from our administration, starting with our City Manager, Ms. Doom. Good evening.
Mayor, Ms. Doom is not in. She has shared that she doesn't have any additional report from last week.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any reports, Ms. Walton, for us?
Mayor, not at this time. I will echo kind of the boards and commissions. We've got a new application that is on the website. We'll be doing some advertising. So, if anyone is interested in serving on a board or commission or being reappointed, we ask that you fill out an application and submit that over to the City Manager's office.
Thank you. Any questions for our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Walton, at this time? Saying none, moving right along to our Finance Director, Mr. Blum. Mr. Blum, good evening. Oh, we have Ms. Palmaville. Hi, how are you?
Hello. I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Good.
The Finance Director is out for the next couple of weeks. We have no report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Palmaville, who's our Acting Finance Director and replacement of Mr. Blum? He's out. Saying none, moving right along to our City Attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I only had one topic to discuss this evening, Madam Mayor, and it relates to the possible appointment of the Acting City Manager. Back on November 9th, I did send an email to the members of council, as well as Ms. Doom, with three attachments. One was a proposed agreement for Acting City Manager, which has language on there, but also blanks to be filled in if there is going to be a discussion regarding that. I also included a copy of the City Council minutes back from June 1st of 2010, where the council voted at that time to pay the Assistant City Manager, who was Randy Ultimus at the time, a stipend in the amount of $10,000. And then I also attached a copy of Mr. Ryan Cotton's proposal to act as the East Point's interim City Manager while the city conducted a search for the City Manager. So, the council could use this, use this time to discuss how the council wants to proceed regarding the appointment of an Acting City Manager under the circumstances.
Council.
I think I'm not. Yeah, I'm not prepared, I guess, to act on that right now. Can we?
Can you want to come back? I think we all want to come back on that one. Mr. Albright.
Okay, that'll be fine. Does the council want to add that as an agenda item for a future City Council meeting?
I thought we were going to, yeah, I thought we were going to do that. I think Councilwoman Lucido, you guys are handing up.
Yeah, I was just going to recommend we add it to the next agenda.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, I concur. Next agenda item for the next meeting would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, very well. Madam Mayor, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Not regarding that, other things? Okay, moving right along.
All right.
To new business. I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you had your hand up. Okay, going right along to new business. Item A was taken off. We didn't need to put that on there. So, we're going to go to item B, the approval of a recommendation by the Planning Commission for conditional approval for the special land use for 21000 Grashit Big Cans BBQ council. Any discussion? If not, let's move right along to the motion.
Sure, Mayor. And just right before making the motion, just in case Mr. Green was wondering why we removed A from the agenda, was just because it only requires Planning Commission approval, just in case he wasn't sure. We don't need to approve it also. So, that was the only reason. And then, so sure, Mayor, I'll motion we approve the recommendation by the Planning Commission for conditional approval of the special land use as consistent with the requirements and standards of Section 50-49D for the property located at 21,000 Grashit, parcel ID 2-14-31-351-2, assessors Springer State subdivision lots 51 to 55 included.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to item C, approval of council liaisons for board and commissions. I believe our Councilman DeMonaco added this. You have the floor.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Really, the only, oh, thanks. Really, the only reason I added this was because we did kind of informally agree to everything and didn't actually take a vote. Just wanted to take a vote, just to, you know, have it set in stone, I guess, essentially. So, if you don't mind, then I could make a motion, then, that we just approve all the council liaison positions agreed to at the last meeting. And I guess I could just read that one more time real quick. The SMSD, SMDA, Sarah Lucido's regular member, Rob Baker is alternate. MML would be myself. SEMCOG, Monique Owens is a regular member. Sarah Lucido, alternate for the Library Commission, Harvey Curly. Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, Sarah Lucido. Beautification Commission, myself. Downtown Development Authority, Harvey Curly. Housing Authority, Monique Owens. Parks Commission, Rob Baker. Planning Commission, myself.
I'll support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Item D, appointment by City Manager with concurrence of the City Council to the East Point Housing Authority for one term to expire October 1st, 2026.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll motion to approve the City Manager's appointment of Deanna Williams to the East Point Housing Authority with a term to expire October 1st, 2026.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
And Mayor Owen.
Yes. The next item is a discussion on our tree lighting ceremony.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had asked the administration, put that on, because I I had thought that we really need to act on this now, so people will know what we're going to do and who is going to be responsible for it. So, I thought that my only, my only concern is that a couple of the cities have opted out for it. I think St. Clair Shores and Roseville, but Roseville has got a unique way that they're going to have the tree lighting ceremony, and we can talk about that in just a little bit. So, I just wanted to put this on, and, you know, maybe we'll vote not to have it at all. My only concern is that I don't think we can go inside the building unless we open it up for people who have to go to the bathroom. I know one of the paternal organizations wanted to come back and serve hot dogs again, and they had asked, are we going to do it? And I said, well, it's on the agenda for this Tuesday, so I'll let them know one way or the other. But if they serve hot dogs again, they'll have to do that outside. I guess my only, I don't know, Madam Mayor, I guess you call it a wish, that last time we had, and I know you've had it for several years, I guess I'm going to say, back in the day, Madam Mayor, when I was there, that we had the showmobile out in front, and the Parks Commission got up on stage, the council people, and then we had Santa Claus come in on the fire engine. He got up there, Mrs. Claus got up there. He welcomed everybody to the city as well as the mayor did. And then we had somebody, before they lifted Christmas trees, we had a choir up there, whether it was from an elementary school or the high school choir, that sang Christmas songs, and the little girl or boy hit this plunger, and the lights came on. But when we have it out in the back, when you hit the plunger, no one in the back can see the lights come on. Can they? I mean, the building is in the way. So, that's my thought. So, I'll shut up for now, Madam Mayor, and let the rest of the councils speak.
Now, that day, is that December 16th? Ms. Walton, what date is that?
I'm not sure. Historically, when it has occurred, we don't have anything in the books now for it.
Okay, because the reason I said the date, I have gotten it, it's probably a little bit off. I thought it was the same day, December 16th, because the school superintendent at St. Peter's wanted to have the third and fourth graders come over to City Hall that morning in the lobby to sing carols. So, I thought that was the same day that we had the Christmas lighting, that they were trying to do it that morning, and probably couldn't come that night. So, that's why I was trying to confirm the dates before we told her, yes. So, that's why I need to know the date, because that would be great. We had the school coming in. I know we had the high school come in that night for the tree lighting ceremony. So, I think as we progress and move forward, I think some of the schools are coming back and want it, and people are participating in this tree lighting ceremony. Each and every year, it's going to get better and better. So, I think we still should do it. I think, I think it's needed. We had the Juneteenth event this year. We also had the car event, the car show of Grashit Cruze this year. And so, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to move this for the tree lighting ceremony and find a way where we can do it in a safe way. If we have to bring people inside, we can do a total amount of people at a time. They also have to be, you know, their temperature mask and everything like that, and as people come out, more people can go in. That's the idea. So, council, what kind of ideas do you have? Councilwoman Lucido?
Yes, I believe that historically, we've always done the tree lighting the first week of December. I believe a lot of times, it was on the first Wednesday, and then I think we changed it to maybe Thursday of that week because of state of the county. But, yeah, I would like to do something this year. I definitely don't want to not have anything. I agree with that. In my opinion, I would prefer not having anything indoors. Sorry. My light went out on me. I would prefer not doing anything indoors. So, I would like to plan something, and even with maybe like less, because we're talking about this kind of late, we might not be able to do it that first week of December. But I think I would be open to, you know, making it a little bit later, as long as, you know, we're able to do something.
Yeah. Councilwoman DeMonaco.
I was just going to comment on the dates. I did Google calendars nice and handy here. We did do it the first Monday, like Councilwoman Lucido was saying on 2019, so that we could make the state of the county. Prior to that, I think they always overlapped, and it looks like it was the first Wednesday, at least, I think every single year before that, it looks like, yeah. In my calendar, at least.
Madam Mayor.
I was going to say, even if we moved it further, having it possibly on a Friday, where people don't have to go to work or go to school the next day, I think you might have a bigger turnout, because I think we have it on Mondays and stuff. We have always had a good turnout. But people don't have to go to work the next day. I think people would show up a lot more, and people don't have to get up in the morning to take their kids to school. That's just the idea. Councilman Curly.
Thank you. As we discuss this and come up with at least a date, I guess my next question, who are we going to make responsible for this? Obviously, the five members on the council aren't going to do it. So, I think we need to discuss who we're going to ask to take the responsibility to do this. I see Sarah's got her in.
Councilwoman Lucido.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it might be a good idea to maybe set like up a subcommittee to plan an event, and maybe a couple of council people can be on the subcommittee. Someone from the administration, and someone from DPW could be on the subcommittee to plan an event that would be COVID-safe, because there's a lot of communities doing different things. I heard some communities of doing parades even, other communities doing like a drive-by tree lighting ceremony, things like that. So, maybe they could review all those different ideas and come up with a plan and set it up, you know, work to set it up. And we might even be able to get a couple of people from the community to volunteer to be on the subcommittee and just let them plan it. I think, I mean, I would be okay with that. I trust all of us, in our opinions, into planning, in our administration, in planning, you know, a good event.
I would love to be on that.
Usually, who plans it? Give me one second. Usually, who plans it? The Recreation Department, RARE, helps us with that planning. I think I worked with them last time in adding some things to it. I called them about a week or so ago and asked them, what do they have planned? And they really didn't have any idea. So, I thought we used RARE, Councilman Curly.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, Madam Mayor, I'd love to be on that. If we have the subcommittee, if we agree to that, I would love to be on the subcommittee.
Councilwoman DeMonaco.
Yeah, actually, I was going to say what you said, Madam Mayor, about RARE, and then I was just going to suggest if we could email the board and commission members to see if any of them would be interested. I think a lot of them are always looking for other things to do in the community. So, I think that'd be nice to ask them. But, yeah, I think, to me, I think, you know, I think I'd be, I think the same as what Councilwoman Lucido and Councilman Curly said. I just wouldn't be comfortable doing anything indoors, but any other ideas other than that, even if it's not just the traditional tree lighting at City Hall, if there's some other ideas, I know, you know, sort of like a parade-type thing, or driving around the city, you know, doing something else like that, whatever, I think the subcommittee comes up with, I think, would be good.
Yeah, I think it's still last minute. Like Councilwoman DeMonaco said, just getting people already on the commissions to put this together with Councilman Curly as a liaison on that, that would probably help, trying to get people to commit to something. So, we don't have that much time, and I think in the future, I was talking to Councilwoman Lucido about this, putting a commission together for community events. And so, when we move forward, we don't have to, when we have community events moving forward in the city, we have a commission for that that gets sponsors that do things like this, and Easter, and all other things that we have moving forward. So, we don't have to worry about events and how we're going to pay for those things. We have someone that, a commission that does that. But as in regards to coming inside, people do want to have to use the bathroom and things like that. People might have health issues and might need to go to the restroom. We don't want to close that out. So, going back to what I was saying, letting people in and making sure that, you know, their temperatures checked, and they have a mask on, and doing the best that we can to, you know, bring people inside is the best way to do it. We can't stop the virus by putting on masks, being vaccinated. We can't do anything to stop it, but we can do our best to decrease it by having, you know, things in place to do that. So, I think the tree lighting is good. I think we just have to be very creative in how we're going to do that. And I think, anyone else want to speak on that? We have our Fire Marshal. Hi, good evening.
Team Mayor Castle. Yes, Councilman Curly, if you're going to be heading this thing, or whoever it is, you can just keep the fire department in the loop. So, we typically deliver SAMO, and we've been more than happy to do that, as long as we are in the loop of to know what's going on, what time, where it's going to be, and everything else, so we can kind of plan for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lucido.
Yeah, if we did the subcommittee, I would love to have the fire department involved and help planning it. I mean, I think that they're always, they always assist us with it. Like Councilwoman DeMonaco said, maybe reach out to RARE and ask one of their members to also be on it, so they can assist us with it.
Okay, I've written both of those down, RARE and the firefighters. That's good. That sounds like a lot of fun.
Sounds like fun. So, getting a program together, I have a lot of people that want to actually be a part of that. I have a violinist that wants to be a part of it. Of course, again, we have to find out what date. So, you all want to look at your calendar, so we can see what date we want. Now, she was talking about December 16th. That's on a Thursday. So, that would give us, if we did it on the 16th or the 17th, that gives us at least a month for that subcommittee to get things prepared.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe December 16th, there's a ZVA meeting. If we could plan it on a night when there's not any boards or commissions meetings, I think it would be better, that way then, you know, people that have that obligation contend.
Now, Christmas is on, tell me what Christmas. I've never really celebrated Christmas in my life.
It's on a Saturday.
The 25th? It's on the 25th?
Yeah, it's on a Saturday.
It's on a Saturday. So, why won't we? Okay, so why don't we want to do it the day before Christmas, on the 24th?
No, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, 90%, of the churches in America have a Christmas Eve service on the 24th. And let me, Madam Mayor, can I take two minutes to tell you what Roseville is doing? At least, this is what I heard from our administration. Could I, could I share that with you?
Yes, please share with us.
Okay, they are going to go around the city. Okay, there they are going to go around the city, driving up and down the streets, and the first car would be a a police car. Then they have two trucks behind that, both decorated. One is singing uh playing Christmas music. The next one has Santa Claus and his wife. Then the next one would would be a fire engine, and they plan to go around around the city doing exactly what they would do, rather than having it as stationary thing. So that's just an idea. I'm not suggesting that we should do that. That'll be up to the committee to come up with something, then bring it to the council. But I think our that committee ought to ought to meet by the next council meeting, so so we um so we would know. And I I don't know if this Councilman De Monaco mentioned maybe a Saturday, or Friday, uh maybe the seventeenth.
Seventeenth would be good.
Or, you know, or the or the tenth, but I don't know if that's too far.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just gonna say that would it, this is the question, would the tenth be too far from Christmas to have a Christmas lighting?
I was thinking the seventeenth is a Friday, and it gives you a a month to prepare, close to a month to prepare. Councilwoman.
I I think the seventeenth works good, because it gives them more time to plan something. I may, I definitely agree with that. The tenth would, I mean, it's, I don't think it's too early, the tenth. But I think just giving the the committee more time to plan everything, have a couple of meetings, make sure they work with city administration and rare to get everything all set up and planned.
Okay, um I I don't know if we need it, Madam Mayor. I don't know if you need a motion. If you're gonna call for a motion, sometimes we go by consensus. So I I I think the um the seventeenth would be great. So at least the subcommittee can start with when we're gonna do it. Then we just have to figure out what and who.
Okay, sounds good to me, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think we should probably do a motion to set up the subcommittee and um you know, then appoint like the two council people that would want to be on the the subcommittee.
Okay. Go ahead.
Who who's the second? And I'll be happy.
I'll be the second person on it on on that committee. So me and Councilman Crowley.
Yes, that's fine. Okay, uh Councilwoman Lucido suggested a motion, so I would yield the floor to Councilwoman Lucido to do that.
Yeah.
To make the motion.
I will, I'll make a motion to set up a subcommittee consisting of Harvey Curly, Mayor Monique Owens, um a member of the city administration, maybe a member of DPW, and maybe a member from our public safety division, whether it be fire or police. Um and um and also inviting members of the rare board to join.
Okay.
Let me make a discussion, because we have so many people on that board that don't live in the city. So no offense to that. I was going back to what Councilman De Monaco was saying, because we got these, like someone from the but since it's so last minute, you might can't do it. I was thinking about having somebody on a beautiful occasion that knows how to decorate, somebody from ACDC. You know, if I said it right, um each person from both, you know, who already serve on those committees to be on there, because they already live in East Point or the history, have some creative ideas. And um because we got the police, we got the fire. I think, I don't know if they really, they got so much other work to do. No, they want to be involved, but.
Madam Mayor, um I mean, I think in the future, that might not be a bad idea, but I don't think we have enough time to get a volunteer from all the different boards and commissions. And I think that just having public safety involved, so they know the plan is important and what we're deciding. And I think city administration is the one that's gonna have to kind of work with rare to get everything set up. And rare, I think that, I mean, well, for rare would be members of East Point. So we would, we would hopefully the one, the representatives from East Point would be the ones that would volunteer to be on our subcommittee. So I think it would just be city administration and public safety that wouldn't necessarily live in the city. But I think they're very involved in the city and would be an asset to be a part of it.
Yeah, I think me and Councilman Crowley do a pretty good job. Councilman De Monica.
Yeah, and I would uh about the boards and commissions, I was just mentioning that maybe we can just send an email to them if they can some, send someone, they can. If they can't, they can't, you know, not necessarily try to make it like a requirement of each board or anything. Um but I think they'd be, you know, happy to at least uh hear about the opportunity, you know, don't get fifty people on the the committee, but you know, you know, so, you know, five to eight or, you know, ten or something, I guess, probably is okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I I, Madam Mayor, I think I have a pretty good idea. I wrote everything down. Everybody's set. So I'm on, I'm on page five, but I think I got a handle on it.
Did uh you need a support?
Did somebody support that?
Harvey did. Motion and support, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Sounds good. I'll try to actually see if they can come on the same day as the um event, the uh Luke Saint Peter's Lutheran. So we can have people during the day and we can have some delightful music at night. So um that being said, go back up here. Thank you, council for that. And thank you, Councilman Curly, for putting that on the agenda tonight.
Mayor, I did want to mention to you, the seventeenth is a Friday, so City Hall will be closed to the public, so we won't have like the staff in the front for Caroling. Uh but.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just probably do it that sixteenth.
We could still do it the seventeenth. Um I hope we're gonna probably end up using this building to go to the bathroom. It sounds like.
Yeah, they want to come during the day for the residents during the day that were coming in, paying their bills and things like that. Yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't have an audience.
So we probably still let them come during the day. So um we'll see if we can incorporate them that night to Carol for the event. That would be nice too. So I'll talk to the superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Walton, for that information. Uh moving right along to payroll and bills.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of two million, five hundred, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the hearing of the public. We do two. This is our second one. The hearing of the public is now open. You get three minutes.
Mayor, uh Ms. Tina Colston would like to speak first.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman, for having me back. Uh the last meeting, uh you you said you didn't re- uh receive my emails, and I sent them three times, and I also sent them again for the fourth time. Has everybody received my emails in regards to the grass clippings? And uh it was the repair of my neighbor's uh drain and the street repairs, and there was no po- permits pulled. And my concern is that uh we don't know who did the street repair. Uh Darren was saying that uh it's the owner's responsibility from the s- from the house to the street. And uh I talked with the owner. He says, I don't have nothing to do with it. He says, I didn't pay nothing. It was uh the city. You have to call them. And I believe it was uh Councilman Curly says he's gonna uh get back with me on this. I was wondering how we're gonna follow up on this. I didn't mean to say that I'm off through, but I thought there was gonna be a follow-up and we're gonna have, you know, a report back and forth. Uh are we gonna follow up on this, or how do we go about it?
Thank you, sir. We usually answer the questions at the end of the meeting. But I'm gonna interject and just let you know, when we say we follow up, if Councilman Curly say he followed up, I believe he did. Anything that we do, we have to go under investigation. So and have the prior, you know, the proper people investigate what you're talking about. We just don't make a decision based upon what you say. We look at both sides and we investigate to have a clear understanding of what's going on. And then we have somebody follow up with you. That's how that works. So we're not ignoring you. It's still uh under investigation to see what's going on. Were you done speaking at this time? Okay, um anyone else?
Ms. Tina Colston um wanted to speak. I'm not sure if she wants to unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Ms. Tina Colston.
Want to move right along to Ms. uh Siopa. Good evening.
Good evening. Um I was just, uh I wanted to say something about the Christmas event. Um I was actually thinking about this a few months ago. Um what about if we had like a drive-in at a park and had the tree lighting on screen um live from City Hall and had like a little popcorn stand or something like that in the stage? Just an idea. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have um Ms. Rafer.
Good evening again. I just wanted to make sure everyone um I know has a great Thanksgiving, since we won't be meeting again prior to that time. And to remember that we should always be thankful for the things we have and remember those who don't have. And as a board member, a school board member and a member of the ZBA, I would love to uh get involved with helping with the um tree lighting ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Federley, I'm saying it right, please. Good evening. Mr. Vareen, please. Good evening. Yeah, the unmute yourself. There you go. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, uh Mayor Orange. Good evening, council and uh East Point residents. I just wanted to say on behalf of Big Ken's Barbecue, I want to uh send a special thank you, especially to you, Mayor Orange, for your guidance with um helping us get our special land use approved. And also, um I want to thank the members of the council, uh and especially you, uh Councilmember De Monaco um for your guidance with getting our special land use approved. Uh we're looking forward to or to a very long and productive um uh relationship with the city of East Point and its residents. So again, I would just like to say thank you. I don't know if this is the portion. I did have a question for uh for Turney Albright. Um I don't know if this is the time to.
Can you email him, uh Mr. Albright? Can you uh put in the chat his email address? I don't know what phone number he would like to be called by. I think he has an office number, whatever. What's your preference, Mr. Albright?
Office would be fine. A Madam Mayor, when I speak with uh um the gentleman, um I'll be happy to give my cell phone number uh tomorrow when I speak to him.
Yes, can you put that in the chat, his um office number? Anything else, Mr. Vareen?
Uh no, that is all. Thank you again, uh Madam Mayor and uh city council and East Point residents.
Thank you. And thank you for choosing East Point to invest your business in. Ms. Colston, good evening. Ms. Federley, we don't want to continue. We're giving you some some time. We have to move forward. Okay.
Uh Mayor, can
Yes.
Um just a matter, um I think, Ms. Walton, I think you can ask people to unmute in case they can't figure out how and it.
Oh, there you go.
It would not unmute. I kept clicking the unmute button. It wouldn't work. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. We waited for you.
I I just wanted to comment on the date you're choosing for the tree lighting. Um families get pretty busy close to the holiday, and the seventeenth is one week before Christmas itself. A lot of families go out of town, so they're very busy the weekend before the holiday. So I think that that might be too close to the date of Christmas. That's just my personal opinion. But if the committee could take that into consideration, if they want people to attend, the week before Christmas is usually the busiest. And that's all I have. Have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
I know Ms. Colston has tried to get on a few times. I've done the ask to unmute. I don't know if she is still unable to to comment at this time.
Okay. Well, if there was an issue or a pan or anything like that, please email us. Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
I don't see anything else on my end, ma'am.
Okay, staying on. Thank you for everyone that positively responded with um their pains that helped us move the city forward. I appreciate that. Um the second hearing of the public is now closed. We're going straight to mayor and council reports, starting with Councilman De Monaco.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um let's see, just a couple of quick things. Wanted to thank everyone for putting the Veterans Day celebration together, especially uh James Friedman, Chris Cosley, Robert Cosley, and the others that helped put it together. It was very nice to check out the museum, hear a few things, uh listen to all the different branches uh songs. And especially uh Councilman Curly, you uh you especially enjoyed the Air Force one. Yeah, thank you for your service. And uh Councilman Baker, uh thanks for coming out also. And uh everyone, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Crowley.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick things, if I might. Um I had our library meeting today, two o'clock. And uh they reported that the new a uh air conditioning unit is uh they had their final walkthrough and it's working beautifully. So that's one thing that they took a long time to get, but it's working fine. So thank goodness for that. Um returnables for um the um bottles and cans are doing very well. They have uh nearly ten thousand dollars that they raised, and that goes to the friends of the library to um to it, do a lot of things, and bring special guests in and do a lot of things for the kids. So listen, if uh if you've got bottles and cans but can't get them over to the library, call me or email me on, what it, what is it, guys, on the webpage, website, whatever. Uh I like, I'm gonna be out at ten o'clock this coming Saturday to pick up bottles and cans on people's porches. So if you'd like to give bottles and cans, give, send me your address and I'll be out there on Saturday. Uh we do have a member of the library commission that whose term is up this December. He's also the vice chair, so I would hope that, and he has already sent his request to be reappointed. So if we can go through the paperwork on that, and uh if we get that done by the by the end of the year. Um the last thing is that nobody, nobody that's around wants to see a vet sleep in a cardboard box. But that's what's happening. Thousands of vets are sleeping in cardboard boxes because the government on both sides of the aisle, remember that. Both sides of the aisle, in my opinion, aren't taking care of them. So if you have a chance to uh help a vet, uh send money to the um Eleven Mile and Grashit um housing for the vets, do so. So um again, um Madam Mayor, as you said, everybody have a a great Thanksgiving, and uh we'll see you next time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Baker.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um just wanted to let everybody know this uh Thursday at nine thirty AM. There's the Gleaners Distribution over at Kelly Middle School, or East Point Middle School, I'm used to calling it Kelly. But uh on uh Ten Mile and Kelly, um there's the Gleaners Distribution this Thursday uh on the eighteenth at nine thirty AM. Uh also, uh we just had a parks meeting last Wednesday. Um they're still working to uh make sure our parks have what they need. They're currently uh working at the uh Memorial Park and in the uh the building over there, trying to get the locker rooms and things together. Uh they're pretty much done with everything at Roxanna Park. Um and there's still some discussion about bringing a basketball court for all the basketball players here. And um that is all I have. I want to tell everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving, and uh we'll see you next time.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um first of all, I'd like to start out by um thanking everyone that helped plan the Veterans Day event um last Thursday for the veterans. Especially a thank you to the American Heritage Girls that came out and um volunteered their services and the Pastor Friedman who came out and so kindly spoke at the event, along with Chris Cosley um for speaking and for opening up the museum for people because it was raining.
And for everyone else that contributed. It take, you know, all these little events and things like that, they take a lot of planning. And I am happy that it was, I'm a part of that group that planned that event because they do a lot of great things, including planning Memorial Day Parade and such things. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend because I was out of town for my niece's wedding. So I would like to give a quick shout out to them also and congratulate my niece Hannah and her new husband, Quentin Favorite, to the family. It was a beautiful day and it was in Alabama, so it was warm. It was seventy-one and sunny, not to rub it in. But I did enjoy my weekend because it was warm down there. And also I'd like to thank the Odd Fellows for hosting breakfast for the veterans on Sunday. They always do such a fantastic job and I know it's really appreciated in the community that they take their, their time out to do that and to give back to the community. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I also want to thank Pastor Friedman for always participating in events. He's been doing it for many years and just want to tell him thank you and everybody that put the events together. It was raining that day and I heard that it was transitioned to the Military Museum. So thank you to everyone that, again, put that together. I also want to thank Spag Burger. They worked with me, Veterans Day, we gave out free meals at Spag Burger right there on Nine Mile, free meals to all the veterans and it was thirty percent off to all East Point residents. So it's so awesome that we have businesses right here in the city that look out for our veterans and work with their mayor and council to make sure that we take care of our veterans. I reached out to the VFW Hall and so many other places. And again, soon, I want to build a commission based up off, you know, create a commission for our veterans, for our special needs, for those people that need attention, just like everyone else, and we don't give it to them as much as we can. So hopefully, starting a new year, we have these subcommittees and these committees, you know, targeting certain groups and so that we can make sure that everyone gets resources that they need in the city of East Point. Also, I'm so excited that our Boys and Girls Club is actually moving forward. I am on the chair, so is Bishop Lloyd, who's my advisor right here in the city of East Point. They were selected for Banks Giving. So yeah, with First State Bank, we talked about ways to, to find money to help us fund the Boys and Girls Club because nothing is free. And so we were actually picked, but we need you all to go on First State Bank's website. Go to Banks Giving, B-A-N-K, Banks and Giving, and click as many times you can, probably on different devices, and click the Boys and Girls Club of East Point. The more clicks that we get, we get ten thousand dollars that goes right into the city of East Point Boys and Girls Club for our youth. That is huge. We are finding more ways to find grants, the house for the city of East Point. You know, your mayor is working for you. I need you to help me as well. So that's again, go to First State Bank and go to Banks Giving. You will see the East Point Boys and Girls Club and we need your vote. So please pass that. Hopefully I'll get our assistant city manager to put that on our Facebook page to get people to vote, vote, vote. The more votes we get, again, we get ten thousand dollars. And that's moving along very well. And then I was checking my email, the zoning, people who was on the zoning board of appeals, they're having a class, a two-day class. And we want to push you as a, as the mayor, I always push education. I constantly try to educate myself because I don't know everything. And when I don't know, I ask a question or I just Google it, right? So we have some classes for the zoning board and we push you all to take those classes. Any board that we have that there are classes for to better educate you, to better serve the residents, we want you to take it. And of course, as a city, we take care of that fee. So I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. But as you know, Thanksgiving is every single day. So I am moving forward to adjournment. I'll be praying for you. You all have a good holiday.
So moved.
Support. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. God bless.
Only two minutes, Sarah.
You were, you did good. You did good. Good night, everyone.